All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, December 6th, regular city council meeting. Make sure I'm on here. Thank you for everybody who is joining us here in person and thank you for those joining us online. We're going to go ahead and get started with our invocation given by Councilmember Spencer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you please join us.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have together as citizens in this community and we're so thankful for this beautiful place that we have to live and for all the wonderful things going on throughout the year. We're thankful for this chance that we have to gather as a community and talk about the different issues that that we are discussing and pray that thou will bless us that we can make wise decisions, that we can be kind to those around us and that we will enjoy this beautiful season that we have to remember the Savior and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
This leads us to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll need to make sure we remind everybody to turn off their mics online next time. Thanks for the enthusiastic participation, everybody. All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Kurtz, present. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Foliar.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Salberg. And can we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Cargill? He is traveling for work.
Move to excuse Councilmember Cargill.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dunn and a second by Councilmember Van Orman. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor of excusing Councilmember Cargill, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, he is excused. All right, we'll go to the agenda approval.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to add an item 11D to our agenda regarding a donation from the Rudy Development to the Police Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Spencer. All in favor of adding the 11D to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have amended the agenda. We have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
A second to approve the agenda as amended by Councilmember Dunn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. All right, now onto the fun part. We have citizen comments. So anybody in the audience who'd like to make a citizen comment either now or at the second session at the end of the meeting, you can fill out are they yellow this week? There were the yellow forms on the on the table by the door over there. You'll have up to three minutes to make a comment. It is truly a comment period. There will be no response unless there's something we need to follow up with the commenter on and we'll make sure we have that contact information. For those joining us online, if you have a comment, please shoot a note to Todd Henderson in the chat feature here in Zoom and he will let me know that you have a comment. So we'll, I don't see any here in chambers. Todd, we have any? All right, so just remember there will be another opportunity for citizen comment at the end of the meeting. Now onto the fun part. Do we have one coming in? You want me to wait?
I just wanted to agenda.
I don't have my glasses on. I couldn't tell it was you. So we are now moving on to our announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. So tonight's kind of a special night. We do have a young man in our audience joining us tonight who saved the life of a golfer at Liberty Lake Golf Course earlier this summer. So Ethan, you probably figured it out by now. So thank you to your family for getting you here. So I'm going to actually, if you would, come up and join Deputy Chief Tom Hatley and Chief Simmons. We'll read the proclamation for you and then we'll have everybody here for pictures and I have a special guest, but I think you saw. That wasn't that special. Thanks, sorry about that. We're gonna face the audience.
A proclamation of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, recognizing Ethan Morinidi for his life-saving action. Whereas Ethan Morinidi is a Liberty Lake resident and 2020 Central Valley High School graduate. And whereas Mr. Morinidi is certified in CPR and AED training from Spokane Falls Community College, where he's currently a student completing prerequisites for a chiropractic and sports medicine program. And whereas Mr. Morinidi will be attending the University of Western State in the fall to pursue his doctorate in chiropractics and sports medicine. And whereas on October 2nd, 2022, Mr. Morinidi demonstrated bravery and heroism when he took action in a life-threatening situation while working at the Liberty Lake Golf Course. And whereas Mr. Morinidi observed an individual in the parking lot in distress, recognized the signs of a possible heart attack and selflessly and without hesitation began CPR, used an AED, and continued CPR until the ambulance arrived. And whereas, as a result of Mr. Morinidi's quick response and action, a life was saved that day.
All right, so we're putting to a big load of the council's proclamations. Are we on motion?
So moved.
Then motion by.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks. All right, now therefore, I, Mayor Chris Kaminski, proclaim on behalf of the City of Liberty Lake and the council and the citizens of the City of Liberty Lake, our sincere appreciation as we honor and recognize Ethan Morinidi for his heroic and life-saving action and do by here proclaim the sixth day of December, 2022, a special day in honor of Ethan, dated the sixth day of December, 2022. Let me give that to you. Thank you very much for your bravery. I heard the story and then I kept hearing more about it. I will say, I do want to bring Mark up. DeRogers. So this is the gentleman whose life you saved that day. And I know you've seen him before, but I just wanted to get you guys together. It's a very special moment and I understand that you finished your certification not more than a few days before this happened. Two months, okay, I apologize. Got a little bit. So thank you for, you know, your efforts and I'm sure your family is very thankful as well and I think there's great things in store for you, Ethan. So we really appreciate it. Can we get a picture with your family up here with Ethan and their proclamation and we'll kind of step out. Oh, so the chief's brought a patch and a challenge point. Great. Thanks, guys. Come on up. We'll jump out for a minute. And then we'll get one with all of us. Too many things. And I want to thank social media for helping me get ahold of Mark's phone number. Your friends at the Boy Scouts gave it to me. Those are always, always fun to do. All right, let's get back to our agenda. Where were we? Okay. All right, reports and inquiries. City council reports. Do we have anybody who'd like to give a quick report for city council? My name, my name, oh, Councilmember Salberg.
You got it. A couple of things. First of all, and I think everybody has already seen the post, but job well done. But by Kyle, Lisa, Jen, Katie, Mark, Chris, and Marie and the entire staff for the report that came back on our audit with no material weakness or significant deficiencies, no issues identified of non-compliance or other matters. I, it's my first time going through the budget session. I cannot thank you for not hiring a good job and tell my staff. The second thing is, this has been posted on some of the community pages too, is that if folks are looking for something to help, there's a group called Liberty Lake Spreading Christmas Cheer. There are four organizers, one of them, her first name is Erin, and they have chosen families throughout the year. They have gone through and screened them and assist families facing tragedy or hardship. On Amazon, they have their own site. If you, you know, when you go to the Amazon wishlist, it's called the Liberty Lake Community Christmas Cheer. And it's a, it's a cause for helping our community, so. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, Councilmember Dunn.
Sorry, I have no updates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw your hand. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, then we'll go on to my report. I'll make it short tonight. I'll get you guys a written update a little bit later. Couple of things coming up this week that Mark will report on a little bit later. Just wrapping up some things at GSI Valley Chamber to get ready for the new year again with with policy decisions and as I noted last meeting, once we get those, those final documents are signed off from each of the respective boards, I will get those out to you guys. Tomorrow is the, and I don't know if there's still time to register, but if you're interested, the GSI Legislative Forum is tomorrow evening at the Fox Theater. So if you haven't signed up, we can check and see if there's still time to get you signed up. I believe it starts at 3:30. So check on that. And you know, I had opportunity, as, as did Chief Simmons and Lieutenant Morgan. Last year, I ran into Walmart about this time of year and there was a deputy from, at the time, I, he may be working for a different agency. He was an Umatilla deputy last year and he, his daughter, who had been diagnosed with cancer previously, had started this this drive with Walmart Transportation Department to collect toys for kids who are going to be in the hospital at Christmas. So I talked to him a little bit last year, got his contact information. He was a little bit late getting things out this year. His daughter actually had a scare. Turned out to be okay, but so he was, we were kind of last minute getting it together, but so most of the day on Saturday, the chief, Lieutenant and I were there with a couple of other people collecting toys for those kids here at the local children's hospitals. I went in for a couple more, a little bit more on Sunday and they weren't doing quite as well as last year because we were short on volunteers. They were only doing one door. But it turns out that during the shop with a cop event, that organization donated $1,000 to, and so they got to go shopping for more toys and filled up a couple of these bins and then there was enough cash, I think there was about $1,100, $1,100 collected in cash on Saturday that they were able to go shopping for more toys. So this ranged from infants up through, you know, teenagers and taking care of the parents as well. So hopefully next year, we'll get the information a little bit sooner so we can hopefully round up some additional volunteers and do both doors. But if you can spare a couple hours next year, it's a great, great event. I mean, see, you know, people who, you know, only had a couple extra bucks in their name and give it. I talked to a nurse who had been a a nurse at Sacred Heart Children's for 40 years, you know, talking to her about her experiences. So it was a really great, great bonding and reminder of what Christmas is all about. So I think that's all I've got. So my agenda keeps timing out on me here, so I apologize. So we are up to city administrator? Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council and the public who are with us and on Zoom, if you are looking at your copy of the city administrator report, we're starting with the events and reminders. And as the mayor mentioned, we've got the legislative forum that is tomorrow that is sponsored by Greater Spokane Inc. And then on Friday of this week, the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber is hosting a nonprofit showcase. And essentially what that is, is an opportunity for about 40 nonprofits from the Greater Spokane Valley region, including a couple from Liberty Lake proper to kind of set up booths and tell people what they do and solicit volunteers to come and help them out. And as many of you know, because you're involved with, if not one more nonprofits, these are really glue-making organizations. These no community can thrive without a healthy grouping of nonprofits. And so this is an opportunity to go out and check out what they do and if something interests you to sign up to volunteer. December 13th and 15th, we've got a couple of concerts that are going to be put on by the Liberty Creek Elementary School out at Orchard Park at the Winter Glow. And so that's always a fun opportunity to go and check out how some budding musicians in the community are faring. So December 13th and 15th on that, the Liberty Lake Library is hosting a Christmas party on December 17th. And then leading into the Christmas holiday, just wanted to point out that on December 26th, the city city hall will be closed, library will be, will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. And also want to point out the library, in addition to being closed on December 26th, will also be closed on December 24th, which is Christmas Eve, which is a Saturday, but it's a normal operating day for them, but they will be closed on the 24th. We talked about this at the last city council meeting and so wanted to remind everyone that the Leaf and Beach event that's hosted by the Water and Sewer District is going to be extended to the end of December. We talked about possibly extending it last time. They've agreed to do that. And so through December 31st now, the gates will be open out at the district for those leaves and yard things, bagged yard things to be taken out and disposed of. And then finally, on the events and reminders, Winter Glow, fun festive opportunity to get out and spend time with neighbors through January 1st. Any questions about events and reminders? Yes, ma'am?
Do we have any times for December 13th and 15th for the concert?
I believe both of those start at 5:30 PM.
5:30?
Yes.
Can we just, if we, once, if we can confirm and just get that out to the council?
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mark.
So seeing no other questions on this, I am going to invite Lisa Key to introduce the team that's going to provide counsel with a trailhead construction update. Lisa?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce I'm sorry. I'd like to introduce Tanner Peterson, who is our Bauton's project manager for the construction phase of the Trailhead Project. And Tanner's going to share with you a presentation. Take it away, Tanner.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you all for, for having me be a part of this here tonight. Can everyone hear me all right to start?
Yes.
Great, thank you. This is, appreciate it, Lisa. This is just an awesome job for you guys, not just, not just for, I mean, for Bauton, but for myself personally, a big golfer myself, not to be confused with good golfer, but big golfer nonetheless. So this is a dream getting, getting to work on this every day. So there's a few things. I'll share my screen here and run through. Everyone seeing that now?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So the, kind of the, the quick agenda here for this, go through the progress to date as far as construction and the project in general. Then we'll look ahead of, you know, what's upcoming in the next few months here. And then three, just some kind of high-level project highlights of the job. And then I'll take any, any questions that you guys may have about the project. It was actually three months ago today that we received the formal approval. Hard for me to believe, but three months today that we received approval to start on the project. And that's exactly what we did. The next day, we were in there doing asbestos abatement of the existing building. That was a couple of week process and then quickly following that was what you see here, the demolition of the existing building. So this was about 15 minutes into that first day, that first morning, when, when the ground was still clear of demo. A little bit later in the day, there, it comes down quickly. The whole building probably was, was down in three days and then the bulk of their work is, is getting everything piled like you see there out of there and trucking it off the site. So there's a little bit later and then about a week or two later, there's, you know, kind of the final, final product. You see the existing concrete walls of the old building that were there. We're able to reuse those as the foundation. Obviously, that saves a lot of time and cost on the project. So a big, big positive for, for all of us in that sense. Following demo, we are able to, you see our footings here. This is actually, you know, we were able to start this area that you're seeing is kind of the new addition on the west side of the building. So you see the, the building still standing. We're able to get a head start in this area and then once it came down, move into the basement. And up here, we also had some, you know, on the north side, some addition. So quite a bit bigger than, than the existing building. So from footings, you know, we move into our, our concrete foundation walls. There's a couple of our guys, our Bauton guys forming up the big walls on the, on the south side of the building. There. From there, we get to move into our underground work, underground plumbing. You see there, there's kind of the bathroom groups on the left. So ton of, of underground pipes there, electrical, all that fun stuff in the underground. And then on the right, you get to where we get to backfill that and you see our vapor barrier there that goes down right before before we pour a big, big, always a big step on the job for us, pouring our slabs. So we had two different slab pours on this job. One kind of for the, for the up top, the second floor area, you see the guys here and then the finished product on the right. And then going down the next week, a week after that one going down, there's the basement pouring that slab down there. You see the elevator pit and then kind of the semi-finished product on the right. So big, huge in construction whenever you're done with concrete. It was kind of the, what we call the critical path of this schedule, the, the activities that can't slip. You have to hit these dates and despite the challenges in the early snow we had, we were able to hit those as scheduled. So that was really, really big for our team. Other cool thing we got to get done, for anyone that's been out there, you notice about two thirds of the parking lot had been paved. We were able to get the, the last remaining area paved this year, just in the nick of time, which is great, just less to do come spring and also just created helped keeping this site from being a mud pit for us, you know, all winter. So what you see on the right now is, you know, filled with, with wood framing and all sorts of materials. So that was helpful for us as well. That leads us getting closer to where we are today. On the left there, you see our crews get to start standing the columns and we get to start, you know, what you, what starts to look like a building here. On the right, it's about a week ago, our wood framing comes in. You see them building the basement walls and these glue lamb beams there. And then that leads us to here where this was just this morning, almost complete with, with the basement framing there and then really ready to go vertical. So here in the next, you know, coming weeks, you'll really start to see even from just driving by, you'll be able to start really seeing what the building takes shape. So really cool, cool stuff there. So kind of looking forward, I mentioned that, that top one, our concrete was a mad scramble, super proud of, of the entire construction team for, for making these dates, you know, foundations and then the lower slab and the next slab a week later, all right, before Thanksgiving. That moved us into the framing. So wood framing is, you know, started that week of Thanksgiving, currently in progress, as you saw. The site's kind of theirs for the next six weeks, about the end of January is when that, that framing's done. So looking forward from there, a little bit before the framing is fully complete, we get to start work on what we call the exterior envelope, kind of the skin of the building. We'll be putting the weather barrier and insulation on and then we'll have our mason and the siding going on as well as all the, you know, exterior windows and door systems. So that'll follow, you know, start in January and continue on for a couple of months there. And then the next, you know, big, big task after framing our critical path is, is the roofing. So roofing will go right on top of the, our wood framed, our insulated panels that our wood framers install. And then that allows us right from there, that's about two weeks, get right into the interior, you know, mechanical and electrical work. The first thing you do kind of, you know, inside the build out of the building. So that's what it looks like, you know, going through till about the end of January, the goal, get the building up, get it dried in, as we call it, so that we can start working, working inside. Some project highlights, like I mentioned, important things to, to us and, and then therefore you guys, zero injuries to date, always the most important thing for us as a construction company. So that's great. We've had zero injuries on site, zero safety incidents. So that's awesome. We've met our schedule. Like I said, it was a real push there, but we made it through, through our concrete. So everything is tracking for our schedule and that, that date, June 16th, being our construction completion date. And then from there, you know, the owner, you guys have some, some move in time for the, for the planned grand opening in July. We are also on track for, to hit the budget. So the budget that I talked about, you know, we were able to get three months ago. We are no, no major issues there, nothing out of the ordinary. So we are tracking towards, towards that, that budget that we were approved on. Other cool thing, you know, this job, I think we have some really high-quality trade partners, term we use for our subcontractors, people, you know, trades that are doing the work. Especially on the mechanical side, mechanical, electrical, plumbing that tend to be some of your higher risk can really make or break a job. We are, have Apollo Mechanical, Mack and Little Plumbing and Summit Electric, really close partners about and that we work with a lot. So that's, that's great for us. And these guys are, you know, capable of doing $50 million work. They do a lot of that stuff. So really good to have, you know, those sophisticated guys on, on a job. And then lastly, just a really high-functioning team. And this goes down, I put on the left there, what you see, building places that matter and relationships that last. That is Bauton's, you know, our mission statement. And this job, I think, is, is just perfect for that. I know how much this matters to the people that I get to work with every day and Lisa, Chris, Trevor, you know, down the line there. And that it really is just a great relationship, a great team, and that transfers all the way down makes my life and our construction life, you know, easy when you're, when you're working for someone that's easy to work for and that you want to do a good job for. So kudos to, to everyone that I've been involved with in that sense. It's just really been a great job and a relationship that I truly like coming to each day. My last job personally was, was not a good experience. So it's been a great breath of fresh, breath of fresh air and I truly appreciate working for the city so far. So with that, I, there's your future beautiful building. If there, anyone has any questions, feel free. I'll do the best I can.
Looking around, does anybody have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Great work so far. I'm impressed at how fast it's going.
Good, good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to the next couple of items, I'm going to invite Kyle Dixon to come up and he's got some probably quick additional comments to make. Councilmember Salberg, you heard talk about the audit exit report earlier. There may be some additional comments that Kyle would like to make about that. And then he's also going to update you on the 2023 insurance coverage that we talked about last council meeting.
Thanks, Mark. Mayor, council. Thank you, Councilmember Salberg, for summarizing as well as I would have the results of the 2021 audit. It's always gratifying being in our position to get to report that to you guys and the citizens that we had another clean audit for, for 2021. And so in anticipating what's coming down the pike for 2022, we have on your guys' agenda later tonight, software outfit by the name of debt book that is going to allow us to hopefully streamline future requirements that are, that are coming down the pipe from the state auditor's office. And hopefully reduce some of those costs that we see from the auditors that we see every year. So the audit came in just at $18,000, which is more or less what we anticipated. There is always room, I think, for us to try to make their job as easy as possible and reduce that time because they bill by the hour. So you can realize true cost savings if you can make their job as easy as possible. So we'll discuss that a little bit later, but I just want to thank our treasurer, Anne Marie, and all of our staff for, for all of the support they provide during this process. It started in May and we just finished our exit a couple of weeks ago. So that tells you kind of what the slog was this year. So, so hopefully we can tighten that up next year and that's kind of what we're trying to do. Being a little bit more proactive with some of these items that, that we can help with that process. So.
So but transitioning in, everybody, I believe, is aware to some extent the information we got back from our insurance company regarding coverage for twenty twenty-three for general property liability and risk management services. And so over the last couple of weeks, I've been reviewing different alternatives. I've also been reviewing our interlocal agreement that we have with CIAW. And perhaps not uncommon, which I found out with these other two agencies, is there is a one-year withdrawal notice that you have to provide this company before you can switch carriers. And so that was due on December first and we submitted that, I believe, on the twenty-ninth of November. So we are in a position to switch carriers for twenty twenty-four. Unfortunately, we are not in that position for this coming year. And so I did discuss with CIAW different deductible amounts. Why? Obviously, what is the rationale for this cost increase? And it was a sixteen point five percent increase across the board. And our exposure has increased through purchase of property, additional staff, additional fleet. That provided what I would call a perfect storm for this. This increase that has kind of forced us to take action and try to find different alternatives. And so with that, we have, so the time that it'll take to get these quotes back from these two other entities will probably take us through the first quarter. They're going to do a comprehensive review of all of our properties, all of our vehicles and and all of our contracts and exposures and everything of that. And so it's going to take them some time to get that information back. We will have that to counsel, probably towards the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. We can make a decision on on what route we want to choose from there. So but I did confirm these two other entities both have that one-year opt-out clause, the same as CIAW has as well. So. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Go ahead, Mayor Burton.
Thank you. My question is, did they give you any kind of an idea of the percentage of what was attributing to the premium increase? Based on an increase across the board for everybody versus our own unique, we've added staff, equipment, buildings?
Yes. So what you would see is, so they piece it out. You have general liability, you have, they piece out PD liability, they piece out equipment breakdown. Auto comprehensive auto liability. So you have ten different indicators of what this is going to be. And so your general, your general property is going to be your biggest number. And our biggest increases was increase in fleet. And also increases in, and I'll show you, I have here, an increase in cybersecurity liability was our big. And that's across the board. That is not specific to Liberty Lake. But they they're starting to piece these out where they had it under general liability. They're starting to identify these and apply major increases to them. And so I did, so I reached out to several other municipalities. And over the last two years, so they can't say that they have a thirty-seven percent increase in one year. They can say over the last two years, they've had anywhere between a thirty to thirty-eight percent increase. And so it's, we're seeing it kind of statewide and probably nationwide. And a lot of that general sixteen percent increase is attributed to the losses they've experienced in the previous handful of years with different natural disasters and things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, thanks, Kyle. Appreciate that.
Thanks. So before I move on to the last item on my report, I just want to circle back and confirm that the concerts out at Orchard Park that are going to be put on by Liberty Creek Elementary will start at five thirty P M. We'll follow up and send an email just to make sure you've got it on your calendars. And the last item I've got is just an update about our Snow Angel program. We kind of loosely touched on this a couple of council meetings ago. But as as we heard earlier, as we read the proclamation, we had a young man that performed a heroic act and actually saved a life. And this is a program, the Snow Angels, where you can be a hero to someone and and not literally save a life. This is an opportunity to volunteer and and help your neighbors out. And this is primarily focused on those that are elderly and disabled members of our community. And we've had very heavy snowfalls over the last ten or eleven days. We're forecast to have some more heavy snowfalls here in the next ten to fourteen days. And so this is a program that really lives and dies by the volunteers that are available to do this work. And and how it works is if you you have a need to have someone come out and do snow shoveling, you can call the city and we will match you up or that project up with a volunteer on our list who then goes out and and does this work and and helps relieve that situation at that particular address. And so really what we want to do tonight is not only update the fact that this is an ongoing need, but that we really need some more volunteers. We are at a a place now where we have five. And we're happy to have those five, but we would love to have more. And so if this sounds like something that you would be interested in doing or recommending to somebody that you know that may have an interest, please let them know, visit the city's website, contact City Hall, and we'll be happy to get you on that list and give you some more information about the program. Any, any questions about?
Tom's one of ours.
Send me. Sign, Councilmember Donna. Okay, got it. Any other questions on that or anything else in the city administrators? Yes, sir.
Where, where on the site do you go to get more information? And I'm kind of thinking also, you know, as far as pushing this out, like links and that sort of thing, where where do you find that?
So we will definitely do our work in in promoting that on social media. But the best place, the easiest place to get to this is to go to our our homepage. And there is a link to the snow removal page right there and it'll take you straight to Snow Angels and give you all the information that you can need. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. All right, on to Parks and Arts Commission. Lena, thanks for joining us.
All right, hi, council. Hi, Mayor. Parks and Art Commission hasn't given a lot of reports. That doesn't mean we're not doing work. We completed our utility boxes at Ridgeline and at Harvard. Those are done and we have two more left. Legacy Ridge and Kramer Parkway. Probably after the start of the new year, we'll start looking at Legacy Ridge and whether we want to do a call to artists. Kramer Parkway, we can't complete until they tell us. So when all that work is done, then we can start on that one. So that one will definitely be late summer. STCU has already committed to sponsoring those. So those are to be done. Our big project going into this coming year is basketball court mural on Pavilion Park's double, double courts. We are going to, depending on if it's, our budget's approved, we will be putting out a call to artists for that in January. Probably giving that a couple of months to get submissions. And then picking some finalists will get them to give us more updated idea of what they want to do. And then we'll pick someone and hopefully have that work done to coincide with the resurfacing that has to be done already on those courts. So they'll resurface, then we'll have our artists come in, do the murals, and then we'll do the lines and all of that. So that is the plan for that. We also Story Walk at Orchard Park, that was one that we put off because they didn't have anyone at Spokane Valley Tech that could do it last year, but this year they're committed to doing it. They have a group of students that wants to. So we are just waiting to hear from them, probably starting in January, we'll get some updates. And Kiwanis has already expressed interest in sponsoring and we'll see where we land as far as the quotes that we get back from them. But those are kind of our big projects.
Let me see questions, but I want to take a moment, Lena. Thank you so much for your service on the Parks and Arts Commission.
This is my last update.
It is, yes. And you know, you've been such a great addition and really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And.
I'm really proud of the work the Parks Arts Commission is doing. I hope you guys continue to support them. Yeah, absolutely.
For years to come. Absolutely. You know, we always have more commissions. So if you feel like you're missing out on something, there's always other things out there.
I've taken another role that's making me really busy right now, but I'm always happy to help.
Keep this in mind. Yes. Thanks again for your service. We really appreciate it. All right, next, Spokane Valley Fire Department. We have Deputy Chief Patley here. Thanks for joining us.
It's an honor to be here tonight. Chief Soto could make it, but I'm very honored to be here tonight. Unfortunately, we had some issues gathering the numbers that we needed to present tonight. So I apologize. I can tell you that we're getting busy as it is, especially coming into the holiday season and with weather and so forth. But hopefully we'll have a better, better presentation for you next month. But I guess if you have any questions for me or the department, I'm here to answer those.
No, well, I guess the biggest question on the kids' minds, when is Santa going to start coming around?
It's the Santa sleigh is all warmed up and us getting outfitted today. So it should be out shortly.
Oh, always, always a good time.
And that should help be social media.
I even find myself hearing the bells and running out. I don't have any kids at home anymore. So we really appreciate that and get that connection with with the youth in our community.
And we're very honored to do that, so.
Right, well, I appreciate you coming, coming tonight. All right, next, Liberty Lake, Shore and Water District by Jay.
Nada.
Sorry. Nada, sorry, I called you the totally wrong name.
I've had my name mispronounced before. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I just have two quick updates from the Liberty Lake Shore and Water District. One, we talked about, Mark got that one, the the leaf drop off through the end of December. So I I don't know if it's going to help or not because it's pretty cold and and, you know, covered in snow out there. I did want to just, wait.
The ice and leaves.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. We had stuff freezing in the bottom of our green bin. I had to go chip it out with the shovel. Two things on that. One, it is for leaf and yard waste debris. So it's not for anything. And I even asked by, do we care? Like, it's open, what do, I mean, why would not some people come all the time? He goes, I'll tell you why. Apparently, if it's open all the time, people assume it's a place where they can dump things, any things. And it's not just big branches then and tree stumps, it becomes appliances and old refrigerators and everything else. He said, there's no way you can do that. It's a disaster. So we really need to have it characterized as this once a year event where everyone in the community can come and drop their leaves off and maybe some other yard waste in that area. And so that's kind of why it needs to be kind of contained. And I did, I do understand that. So and the second one was last time I was here, there was a question about chlorine. And I did ask by Jay, and I guess there was a little bit of a kerfuffle on Facebook. But he said that we do, I didn't think we did this, but we actually do every fall as a precautionary measure, we do a light chlorination treatment of our reservoirs. It's, we do it half the, you know, there's a limit that the public health department says we do underneath half of that. So that's our our goal. So it's very light. It's just a safety precaution. The water we have comes out crystal clean from the ground, but we do it once a year just to kind of be safe. And I asked him, you know, other people that would really care about that. And he said, we've always coordinated with the winery because they're using the water and that can make, they're they're assuming they're getting this pure water and that can make a difference. If anybody else needs to be aware that, we can certainly work with them and we will try to do that. But for the most part, we don't notify everybody. It'd be impossible to do that. And even if there's an emergency situation, sometimes you just have to do it. Everything we do is is well below the the sort of health standards. So there's never an issue with it being a health issue. It's just some people are getting, you know, we're all used to this really tasty water and it can get a little different if it's got a little chlorine. So anyway, we will work with people. If you know of anybody, I know the brewery and the cider house. We want to make sure that they understand what we're doing and we can, you know, let them know when this happens every fall.
Perfect. Can anybody else think of anybody here? I think those are the only two that came to my mind.
Can you home brew anybody or distilling at home? So yeah, that's it. And that's, that's all I had. Happy holidays, everybody. Merry Christmas. Hope everyone has a wonderful time off if you get some.
Thanks for grading and cleaning up the site too.
Oh, yeah.
See any junk being dropped off and that probably dropped off ten or twelve days.
Oh, good, great.
It looked like people were complaining and there were more people there.
Yeah, which I think, I think is great. And and we will dump them out and make sure it's, and we we tried to clean it up more than just grade it out. There's, there's different sections now because we do need to use it for storage of, you know, parts and things like that and gravel and things. So we'll try to keep it clean because it is kind of visible from the highway. So.
One comment again, I just want to commend you on the how well our water tastes. I went to Vancouver for the Thanksgiving break. I almost brought some back just so you could have as a sample. Here, try some of this and quit your complaining. Yeah, no, it was great. So thank you.
We do get spoiled. I travel a lot for work and I go to thousands of like, like, especially in California. Like, gosh, what is this? It just doesn't change it. But I will say this, we can't really take credit for that. I mean, it's, we're pumping it out of the ground. It's, you know, this natural amenity we all have, but we want to protect it. That's a big thing for us is to make sure we can keep this natural amenity because we really are blessed to have that kind of fresh drink more. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else for anybody?
It's like, thanks, appreciate it. All right, we do not have anything on the list for workshops tonight, so we will go on to general business consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mayor. General Business Item Ten, A and B, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Approving the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes and approving the December sixth, twenty twenty-two vouchers in the amount of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
Have a second. Second from Councilmember Salberg. Any questions? All right, not seeing any. All in favor of approving the general business consent agenda items A and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
General Business Item Eleven A, make a motion to approve a total of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, sixty-three cents for the purchase of a rapid flashing beacon hardware for three pedestrian crossings to include purchase prices twenty-three thousand, six twenty-five and the sales tax in the amount of two, twenty-one oh two and sixty-three cents.
We have a second.
Second.
Second, if I'm. I, you know, I keep pointing to Councilmember Van Lomond. Do you have any questions on that? So I know we didn't have any installed this year. So this is for the three to catch up. And I'm hoping maybe we have the bandwidth to catch up maybe and have some additional ones put in later this, later next year. So.
I just have one question. Don't we still have one or two in reserve?
Can't remember Jen or Lisa. We haven't, didn't we have some, I think they were more for spare parts.
That, that's my understanding. Perhaps Trevor could respond.
Trevor's not on. Yeah, we'll have to follow up with that. I don't think we have extras, though.
We just have for the, for the spare parts.
Parts and pieces, okay.
Yeah, that was my, that was my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hearing any, no other questions? All in favor of approving general business item A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, hearing none, motion passes six zero.
General Business Item Eleven B, make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of David Heimbaugh to position three of the Parks and Arts Commission.
David has been on since the beginning. He unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. He teaches Taekwondo over at the Hub on Tuesdays. So he did provide, we've got his reapplication there. And I believe Kelsey sent out a statement that he wrote earlier today as well. So.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for the appointment of David Heimbaugh. Any questions? All right, for all those in favor of approving general business item B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes six zero.
General Business Item Eleven C, make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a one-year agreement with debt book in the amount not to exceed seven thousand, one hundred dollars, including Uncle Sam.
We have a second, second, and a second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any questions for the questions from Kyle?
Could you describe the operations of Dead Book or how it supports the finances?
Yeah, so Dead Book is a, it's a professional debt, which we're not going to use it for that purpose, but lease management software as well. And so what we know is coming down the pike is state auditors are going to review leases and our schedule of what we call our schedule of liabilities to see what leases are reportable and what leases are not. And that guidance is incredibly vague right now. And we know that that is going to lead to some confusion next year during the audit process. Unfortunately, state auditors have a pretty high turnover rate. And so a lot of times what we see is auditors that are learning on the job. And so what we can do to be as proactive as possible to identify and kind of put a bow on a lot of these things that they're going to have a hefty lift with. We're, we're going to try to get out in front of, so we can reduce that as much as possible. So what Dead Book is comprised of is professional accountants, contract lawyers. And and so they're going to personally, we are going to offload our leases. And that is any, all of our leases, including I T, because I T is actually coming down the pike in twenty twenty-four. So we are ready for the auditors when they. Uh, so we are ready for the auditors when they ask us what our schedule of liabilities are. Why are these reported? Why are these not? Uh, and so hopefully we can streamline that process. And also, it's, it can serve and, um, we will get a trial run. We've budgeted for both. But this also includes contract management software as well, which we talked about. And so I do not want to speak for Kelsey in any way. I know she's doing her own research on what she wants that to look like. Uh, this has that functionality. Uh, we will spend some time, uh, investigating that as well as possible crossover.
Questions? Kyle, do you feel like you've got in this, uh, professional services or implementation support to get up and running with the application?
Absolutely. So they provide what they call this white glove service where they, they are with us from start to finish. And I, what I potentially see is, so we, we're going to start out with a twelve-month agreement. We're going to have to justify this service to you guys going forward because if we're not getting that money out of it, then we're not going to have, we're not going to recommend renewal of this service. Uh, if, especially if we can take what we can learn over this twelve-month period from them and use it to our own benefit, and so we have that information, we can manage these going forward uh, on an ongoing basis, so we don't have this continued expense.
I'm looking forward to the contract management piece because as most of you have seen over the years, you know, we, we end up with contracts that have expired and we're, we're renewing them after the fact, or just like, like our insurance one, it's got a one-year, um, you know, out, uh, notice period. So we'll be able to better keep track of those things, so we're not caught behind the eight ball. We can do those things upfront. Any other questions for Kyle? All right, those in favor of approving, uh, general business item C, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
Uh, general business item eleven D, uh, make a motion to approve the donation from Rudy, um, I'm sorry, uh, to the Police Department Capital Fund in the amount of fifty thousand dollars authorized, authorized the mayor to sign the donation form.
Second. Second by Councilmember Kurtz. Um, Chief or Lieutenant, you wanna, well, I know you've already picked it up.
No, just thank you for that approval. Um, the donation last year, we were able to do some miraculous things with that. Um, as far as equipping, um, an additional police vehicle and actually purchasing an additional police vehicle. So that's, um, that money goes into those funds go a long way for us. Thank you.
Right. All right, any other kind of questions? All right, all those in favor of approving item eleven D, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, any opposed? Not seeing any. Item, um, item eleven D passes zero six zero. All right, um, council comments? Any additions?
I just have a question, Mayor. I, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot or anything like that, but, um, have we made any headway with our voting?
We'll ask Kelsey to give us a
I don't know, I don't know the proper terminology.
Waiting till the first of the year.
First of the year.
So we've ran into some challenges, as you guys have seen, with some technical issues. Um, we've trouble shot some of that with, um, Boatcast with Granicus. Um, it seems to be connecting fine tonight, but, um, we are hoping to maybe pause that until they have their cloud version out so that whether you guys are here in person in council chambers or, um, participating remotely, everybody can vote during the meetings, things like that. Um, but it's also up to you guys too. So, um, happy to give it another try in the first, the newer with the, with the program as it is also.
Yeah, the server sounds like it's been okay.
It has been so far this meeting. It's just been unpredictable. Um.
So are you just recording the votes then over there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Old school style.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have the ability to opt out of this Granicus contract?
Well, let me answer that better than I can.
So I believe our contract comes up for renewal in the spring. And there's going to be some discussion about what is left off and what cost savings we can realize because this is a service that we've tried to implement. And through not one, two, three, like multiple different reasons, things have gone sideways through no fault of our own.
I, I, I would suggest that we look for a service level, um, agreement and credit for what, what we have not been able to use.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just, since he, since he raised the issue, um, if I were in your place and had to juggle all the things that were going on in addition to some of the glitches that are happening, if we have something that we can record a vote, it has to be something simpler.
Yeah.
And it has to be something that you're not the one who's trying to figure out because
Well, yeah, most of it's been
Oh, I know.
I can see, so, yeah.
That's, so do we know when the cloud-based version is coming out?
Last I heard, um, and I haven't checked in on it in a few months, they were hoping during the first quarter of this coming year. But I could follow up and see if they have a more firm timeframe for that yet.
Ideally, we would get it up and running, but if not, we'll be pursuing at least a credit, or we have the news. And I know that's covered in the contract. All righty, if there's no council comments, we'll move on to public hearings and appeals. The first is the public hearing for the twenty twenty-two annual comprehensive plan development code amendments. Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, council members, I'm going to share my screen here if you will bear with me for one second. So, um, this is a public hearing and, uh, we just wanted, for the benefit of the public, give a quick overview. So we're dealing with basically four, um, uh, comprehensive plan and development code amendments as part of our twenty twenty-two annual cycle. Uh, amendments to the comprehensive plan maps, uh, an amended zoning map, um, uh, it within, uh, city development code ten dash two A five, um, amendments to limited use requirements for manufactured homes and amendments to vehicle and bicycle parking standards, both in city development code and River District Development Regulations. And so on a high level, um, here's our procedural summary. Uh, the Planning Commission adopted a docket in April of this year. We had numerous workshops, um, at Planning Commission to go through the docket. Um, we did go through the SEPA process and had both the, uh, notices and, uh, comment appeal period. Planning Commission held their, um, their public hearing on the ninth. And, um, again, later this evening, you're going to have the first read of the ordinance before you. Um, I want to comment that, um, as part of your packet, we did include the Planning Commission, um, findings, conclusions, and recommendations. These are still draft. The Planning Commission will actually not ratify them until their meeting on the fourteenth, but you'll have the ratified versions for the second read of the ordinance. Um, Planning Commission, uh, made, uh, several required findings, um, and, and as confirmed by the, the, uh, um, procedural review, uh, SEPA review has been completed on the proposed amendment. All public agency notices and requirements were met and accomplished in a timely manner. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation as demonstrated by the numerous workshops and the public hearing. And the public did have the opportunity to submit written comments at a public hearing before the plan and testify before, at a public hearing before the Planning Commission. So our first amendment has to do with comprehensive plan map amendments. And there's five maps within the comprehensive plan that needed to be amended based upon, uh, the, the annexation, uh, of the property, um, adjacent to Ridge Line High School, um, that was done through ordinance number two seventy-eight. And also the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for the Meadowwood Technology Campus, which changed from light industrial to, um, uh, community mixed use. So the first map, um, that needs to be amended is the actual boundary map. And the difference in this, of course, is the property that was annexed, uh, by the city or by the school district, excuse me. Uh, the second map is cultural landmarks. Again, it's the boundary that's changed. But as we were in the process of doing that, Megan Appold also, uh, uh, was kind enough to update some of the, um, some of the cultural landmarks within our city. Um, the third one is the comprehensive land use map, uh, again, with the, with the zone changes, um, reflected. Uh, the fourth one, um, is the city annexed areas. Obviously, with the annexation, we needed to update this map as well. And finally, the, uh, city street system. And we updated on this one, both the, uh, borders, but also we did add in the extension of Indiana Avenue all the way to Harvard Road. The Planning Commission did consider relevant comp plan goals and policies. You're going to find them on page four of the Planning Commission's recommendation. And, um, uh, city development code ten dash four B five A um, identifies criteria for the approval of these comprehensive plan amendments and development code amendments. And so they went through the process and they found that the amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare, is warranted by a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions, is not necessary to correct an error, is necessary to clarify meaning or intent, is necessary to provide for a proposed use that, uh, was not previously addressed and is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Um, they only need to find for one of these in order to approve these, but, um, obviously, um, uh, there's, their, uh, conclusions speak for themselves. The second amendment that we're going to talk about tonight is, uh, the, the zoning map that's embedded in the development code and it's in, uh, section ten dash two A five. And I, I point out that when, when city council adopted the annexation ordinance, they set the zoning. And also when they did the, the, uh, comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for Meadowwood Technology, again, they set the, they set the zoning. We updated the map based on those, but it actually requires, um, an amendment to code to update the map that's, that's embedded in the code. Um, and again, the, these are based on the, not only the, uh, Central Belly School District, the annexation in Meadowwood Technology Campus, but also the change to centennial split zone property that, uh, uh, was adopted by the city council by resolution twenty-two dash two nine seven. Um, again, the, uh, the Planning Commission did consider relevant comp plan goals and policies, which you'll find on page five of their, their findings, conclusions, and recommendations. Um, they did go through the process of making, uh, uh, the following conclusions that this proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan. It is not detrimental to public welfare. It is warranted by a change in economic and technological conditions or land use issue, conditions, excuse me, is not necessary to, to correct an error, is necessary to clarify meaning or intent, is necessary to provide for a proposed use that it was not previously addressed and is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. The third, um, amendment that, uh, we're going to deal with tonight is the limited use requirements for manufactured homes. And the, this is in two sections of city code. City's code section ten dash two B dash three C twelve, which are the limited use regulations in the R one zone and ten two C three C eleven, which are again, limited use regulations in the R two zone. And basically, the proposal is to elim- eliminate the requirement that manufactured homes shall have a garage, a garage or carport constructed of like materials when nearby residences have carports or garages. Um, the reason for this, um, is basically that this is a requirement that we have for manufactured homes that we do not even have in our code for site-built homes. Um, and so this is trying to deal with kind of an equity issue, um, and to maybe, um, eliminate a barrier for some of our affordable housing in the, um, in the area where we have, uh, uh, manufactured, the man- manufactured home subdivision. Again, Planning Commission considered relevant, uh, comp plan goals and policies. Um, and they are listed on page three of the Planning Commission's recommendation. The Planning Commission found this amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public health, is warranted by a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions, is not necessary to correct an error, and is not necessary to clarify intent or meaning, is not necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed, and it is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Um, and, and again, the, the Planning Commission recommended, um, all three of those, uh, uh, pro- uh, amendments, uh, be approved, uh, by city council. The last, uh, one that we have today is the vehicle, the vehicle and bicycle parking standards. And this is, these are amendments to both city development code section ten three D and River District Development Code section ten three D. The purpose of the amendments was to update vehicular and bicycle parking requirements to be more consistent with demand standards based upon, uh, land uses. Um, to eliminate maximum parking standards, that's been a, that's been a bit of a challenge. We do, we only allow a hundred and fifty percent of the minimum. And, um, that has been a frequent cause for administrative variances in recent years because, um, in some cases, our requirement, our parking, our minimum parking standards are not adequate for the uses that are proposed. We also needed to update vehicle, electric vehicle, uh, infrastructure standards based upon, uh, WAC fifty-one dash fifty dash zero four two nine. And for those of you, you who don't know, um, the regulations increased in this last year. And, um, as of July first of next year are going to increase again. And so, um, our, our code was out, uh, out of date and inconsistent with what the state requirements are. Um, and finally, we wanted to create some consistency between the city and River District Development Regulations regarding parking standards. And this is in an effort to move towards, again, what we've talked about, the codification of River District Development Regulations within the city, the, the city's development regulations um, to make it more transparent, uh, for, uh, the development community as well as the general public. And, um, in terms of the minimum parking requirements, uh, the, the, the changes to that, um, we used a data di- data-driven approach. We use the, um, um, International Transportation Engineer, I T E, parking, uh, generation manual, the fifth edition. And what we use, we looked at the, uh, average, um, demand uh, for different land use categories, um, in updating that. And there weren't a lot of changes, but there were some that, that were pretty material. Oops. Um, again, the Planning Commission did look at, uh, uh, Planning Commission, Commission did look at the, uh, comprehensive plan goals and policies. And they're listed on page four of this planning, the Planning Commission's findings, conclusions, and recommendations. Um, and there are quite a few of them, actually. We did receive, uh, both written, uh, comments from Joe Frank and oral testimony from Jim, Jim Frank on behalf of the Greenstone Corporation at the public hearing. And the Planning Commission, uh, came to the following conclusions that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed. The proposed amendment is not deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Again, I want to remind you that you only need one of these to move to, um, as a basis for recommending approval. So the Planning Commission, um, based upon the comment, the, the comments the comment, the, the comments, uh, of Jim Frank, um, determined that number one, that they recommended to modify the, the proposed parking amendments to eliminate, eliminate exhibit B amendments to the River District Parking Standards, section ten three D vehicle and parking. They also recommended approval of the amendments proposed in exhibit A, which were amendments to the city development code. Um, so, uh, uh, a couple of things that I would note, the comments made, the written comments made by Joe Frank are appended to the planning commission's findings, conclusions and recommendations as exhibit C. Um, it, uh, i- it should be noted that the, the electric vehicle regu- or, uh, requirements are still out of whack with the state. And it should also be noted that several, in fact, a number of the, the revisions that we made were actually, um, supported by Greenstone. Having said that, um, city council, when you come to your decision on each of these cases, um, uh, you can make a motion to approve, approved with mod- approved with modifications, deny or remand back to the planning commission. And so one of the things that we did because of the kind of split decision on the River District Parking and Vehicle regs versus the, uh, um, versus the, uh, city development code parking regs, um, is that we made them as sec- separate exhibits so that if you decide to remove uh, the River District, that it's an, i- it's an easy modification. Um, so here are the exhibits, the ordinance number two ninety-two. Exhibit A is the comprehensive plan map amendments. Exhibit B is the amendment to city development code ten A five. Um, which is the zoning map. Exhibit C is the changes to limited use requirements for manufactured home. Exhibit D is the city development code for the vehicle and bicycle parking. And exhibit E is the River District Development Regulations for, for, uh, vehicle and bicycle parking. And with that, um, if you have no questions, we should, uh, uh, I, I would open it up for questions first, but once we're done with questions, we should open it up to the public for public testimony.
Anybody here in chambers have any questions for Lisa? Councilmember Dunn?
Uh, Lisa, could you go backward one slide to your exhibit, um?
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to compare that to the prior slide with the recommendations of planning commission. There was a collection prior slide that, one more, I think.
Yeah, so, um, it, this is, uh, keep in mind that they, they, each of the, uh, cases were heard and deliberated separately. The ordinance combines them all as separate exhibits. So in, um, in the planning commission, um, packet and in the findings, conclusions and recommendations, you'll find exhibit A is the city development regulations and exhibit B is the, um, River District Development Regulations. Exhibit C is, uh, the comments that we received from Greenstone. But when you go back to the ordinance, we now are dealing with all five of these amendments. And so, um, what you're looking at for the bicycle and parking regulations are exhibit D of ordinance two ninety-two, which you're, you're going to have the first read of a little bit later. And exhibit E, um, for the River District Development Regulations. It does, is, a- am I answering your question?
I think so. To paraphrase, when the planning commission considered it, exhibit B was the reference to River District-based amendments. In what you've shown, exhibit E is the revision to Pl- River District-based amendments. Does that sound right?
Uh, yeah, for the ordinance, yes.
I'm just trying to compare the, uh, exhibits presented to the planning commission to those present in the ordinance.
Yeah, so, so they're the same. It's just that they had, they heard four different, they hea- heard four different cases. They had to deliberate separately on each of them. And the last one, which was the, uh, which was the, the, uh, amendments to the vehicle and, and bicy- bicycle parking. We had changes to both city development code as exhibit A and River District as exhibit B. In your ordinance, we're now presenting them as five separate amendments to give you the ability to respond to the planning commission's recommendation if you so choose.
Follow-up question to respond to, and I guess concur with the planning commission's observation, we would strike exhibit E from the ordinance.
That's correct. Or you could, the other thing that you could do is you could remand it back to them.
Yeah, so when we get to the secondary, traditionally what we've done is gone through each of these individually, thumbs up, thumbs down, or remand back, and then we, then we approve the ordinance as a whole with those. Right, Lisa?
Or, or as amended, planning, or the, uh, city council also has the ability to amend it, uh, the, what's proposed.
Right. Any other questions before we open up for public hearing? All right, um, so we will go ahead and start the public hearing at eight sixteen P M, um, for the twenty twenty-two annual comprehensive plan and development code amendments. Is there anybody here in chambers who would like to testify or comment? I will throw the same opportunity out to the, uh, those who have dialed in on, on Zoom. Um, so if you would like to testify during this public hearing, go ahead and send a note to, um, Todd in the meeting chat, so I know that you'd like to make a comment. We're running low on visitors tonight. So, not hearing any or seeing any. Todd, you have anything? No? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and, and close the public hearing without comments at eight seventeen. That brings us to the next one, the public hearing for the final budget. Anything else? Yeah, yeah, no, no, nothing from you. All right, so, um, the budget has been, um, has been presented and, uh, proposed changes have been made. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at eight seventeen. So if there's anybody here in chambers or again, in, in the public, uh, here on Zoom would like to make any comments on the, um, on the proposed twenty twenty-three budget, please let us know. All right, Todd? Nothing. All right, we'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing on the final budget, um, at eight eighteen. All right, moving on to resolutions.
We have, um, resolution number twenty-two dash two forty, a resolution of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, approving the final plat of Tretina Sixth Edition located in portions of the northwest quarter of section ten township twenty-five N, range forty-five E W M Liberty Lake, Washington, file two thousand fifteen dot P L zero 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 one F.
All right, um, Lisa, is there anything you want to, uh, to share on this, or do we have any questions from the council on this final plat, sixth edition?
I think it's all, um, pretty well, um, addressed in the packet and the agenda bill, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? None? All right, um, first I will, um, see if there's any public comment as we have committed to do for resolutions and ordinances. Once again, just checking to see anybody in the audience. We do, we have some, somebody who wants to speak, so, um, go ahead.
At the risk of getting myself in trouble. I guess I'm as official, as a, uh, citizen here, so Khatayam Notarajan, one five two five South Lilac Lane, Liberty Lake, Washington, nine nine zero one nine. Um, I'm not entirely sure exactly where this is, but I think I know where it is from the legal description. Um, that's, I don't know what it is from the legal source, but anyways, I just want to remind everybody that across the street is a sewage treatment plant. And these are, these, these are recorded, right? Or is this recorded somehow?
Yes.
I, I want to go on record as saying that there is a sewage treatment plant across the street. It's where we process human waste and turn it into something that can be put into, uh, other places. So it's, can be messy and smelly and there's microbes and stuff that do things, but it's a sewage treatment plant. I just want to make sure that people understand that, right? Okay, the wind can blow and it can be unpleasant sometimes.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. All right, not hearing, or seeing any other comments, um, we'll go to, uh, a vote of the council here. Well, I guess we need a motion in a second. Great, we have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Dunn, all in favor of approving resolution two twenty, twenty-two dash two forty, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, not hearing any. Motion passes six zero. You're on to ordinances. First, a couple of first readings.
Ordinance number two ninety-two, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the city of Liberty Lake Comprehensive Plan, the city of Liberty Lake Development Code and the development code contained in the River District Specific Area Plan.
Okay. Uh, no vote tonight, but are there any follow-up questions on this one? Right, not seeing any. We can move to, um, the first read for two eighty-four B.
Ordinance number two eighty-four B is an ordinance amending ordinance number two eighty-four passed by the city council on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, entitled an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
Right, just a reminder that this is something I addressed in the, uh, mayor's budget letter to bring us up to compliance with our financial policies on the percentage of, um, dollars that we have set aside in the restricted reserve fund.
Clarification, this, this, uh, by action of ordinance has already been taken place. This budget amendment is really to accompany that ordinance prior, prior previously.
So now, so that we're going to be making this move this year, so it's for the twenty twenty.
Yeah, so this will be enacted in twenty twenty-two to have us be in compliance going into twenty twenty-three.
Uh, I was considering, uh, suspending rules moved to second read. I don't see there's any interference or I guess I'd say concern regarding completeness ordinance. So I moved to, uh, moved directly to second read for, uh, ordinance number two eighty-four B.
Right, we have a second. Second from council member Solberg, all in favor of suspending the rules to move to second read on two eighty-four B, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so we have, uh, motion passes six zero to move to a second read on two eighty-four B. Kelsey?
Ordinance number two eighty-four B, an ordinance amending ordinance number two eighty-four passed by the city council on December, December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, entitled an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
Okay, so again, we'll open this up for any public comment, um, here in the chambers or online. Todd? Nobody? All right, so do we have a motion, uh, in a second for, uh, to approve ordinance two eighty-four B?
So moved.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by council member Dunn, um, all in favor of approving ordinance two eighty-four B, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero, two eighty-four B is approved.
So next we have a second read for ordinance number two ninety, um, which is an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting the U T the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-eight capital facilities plan.
Um, so again, we'll go to any public comment on, um, the capital facilities plan. Don't see anybody in the audience. Todd, we have anybody on Zoom? All right, so if we could get a motion of a second to approve ordinance two ninety.
Make motion to approve ordinance two ninety.
Right, we have a second. Second by council member Spencer, all in favor of approving ordinance two ninety, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six zero, ordinance two ninety is approved.
Next is a second read ordinance for ordinance number two ninety-one, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the final, uh, excuse me, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
All right, do we have any comments from council? I saw your hand up back there, chief. No comments? All right, just a second. Um, anybody online, any comments on the annual budget for twenty twenty-three? No? All right, not hearing any. Do we have a motion of a second to approve ordinance two nine one?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two ninety-one.
All right, second. Second by council member Dunn, all in favor of approving, approving ordinance two nine one, please say aye.
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 Any approve, any opposed? Not hearing any. Motion passes six zero. We have a budget. Thank you.
Good job.
All right, and now we have one more ordinance to go.
This is a second read for ordinance number ninety-six B, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance number ninety-six A, amending solicitor and peddler license regulations for the city of Liberty Lake.
Any comments from the gallery, either one? Not hearing any. All right, so if we can get a motion and a second to approve to, uh, ninety-six B.
I'll make motion to approve ordinance number ninety-six B.
Second.
We have a second by council member Solberg. Any questions? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving ordinance nine ninety-six B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, motion passes six zero. We have another approved ordinance. All right, thank you everybody for that. So, um, we don't have any emergency ordinances. Um, upcoming agenda items, um, we've adjusted the list a little bit and still have some things without dates on them. Um, so we're kind of working through that. Um, we're tentative for the, just, just for December twentieth on the camping ordinance updates and most likely, um, we will be asking to suspend the rules on that to move that to the second read, the same, at the same meeting. And there's some follow-up meetings that the chief is, uh, setting up, so we can get some try to, try to not, we're trying not to recreate wheel. So, we're getting some inputs from some other agencies. Um, Kyle thinks we're, we should be on track for financial policy updates and, um, a review of the council code of ethics and social media piece. Um, and then for TBD in January and January is going to get pretty full pretty quick, so, um, we're looking at the utility rebate program, county property tax rebate, um, again, um, possible newsletter, um, joint workshop with the library board. We'll probably want to pick that off Tuesday for that and Mayor Pro Tim, since this was your suggestion, I want to get, get with you on that in the next week or so. Um, re- review of the strategic plan, um, design cost for poles and nettings in February and then, um, some additional things coming. Um, we did move the Selkirk Middle School hub trail to the bottom because, uh, hopefully the hub is going to work that CV with, um, as part of their project that they're going to, um, they're going to be expanding. And I believe, um, you can double check with Phil, but I think we have, I think, um, Phil's going to be here to present, um, on the hub expansion, uh, the last meeting in December. So I'll double check with him on that. So do you guys have anything you want to add?
No.
All right, that's a lot. All right, um, citizen comments, once again, we'll open it up if anybody has anything to say. Okay. We got to repeat offender here.
I know, I started really fast. Khatayam Notarajan, same address as before. Um, I had just, I wanted to, you know, I had an epiphany this weekend. Um, I've been working on a big remodel at our house and, um, I remember when Liberty Lake was not here, there was nothing here, nothing. I remember when the zip trip was being built and we were all excited because there's a zip trip out here. You can like get gas, you don't have to drive into Sullivan to get a gallon of milk if, if you need that or something. It was kind of a big deal. And what I realized this weekend is I take for granted all of the amenities that the city of Liberty Lake provides. I think I probably went to Home Depot back to the remodel thing probably six or seven times this weekend, buying things of them, and it saved me so much time. It's right here and there's really great restaurants out here. There's fun places to go. I mean, Saturday night, we just go to different restaurants. There's really neat things out here, even like the parks that didn't use to be here. It's really kind of neat. And I just had this realization that I take for granted all the things the city provides and I had this Home Depot realization, like, you know, I probably save hours of driving, who knows where, to try to get simple stuff. And it's not just that, it's everything. So thank you, thank you all, heartfelt, really. It, you made my life a lot better, the city has, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Well, now you have another option too. We also have the new general story side work. All right, thank you for the comment. We really appreciate it. It's been a good year. Um, great to be going into our last meeting of the year, um, next time with an approved budget. So we'll have a lot of our, of our service awards, some, some P D recognitions, um, and a couple of other small things, but we'll try to keep it light right before Christmas. Um, so no executive session, um, so if I don't have any objections, we'll go ahead and move to adjourn. Nothing? All right, we are adjourned, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight.